Commissioner, I'm delighted you would read South City.
The basic framework for office says there are balanced governance, dynamic partnership, and engagement.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Austin, if you would read the South City business.
It's a problem. That's not a problem. Well, diversity, education. Education has success.
My thanks, Mr. Austin. All right, just to the agendas.
Yes, Mayor, I have thirty amendments agenda that's in the street. I plan to request three members of the board change to the agenda or highlight the grid.
Motion to approve your agenda. Let me resume, I should say. We'll have to do the change. Can we do it like that?
It's okay.
Okay.
Sorry, on the agenda.
Okay.
One second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any question? Not all over the favor say aye. Those are those lights. Okay. Uh. I will move on to the Senate agenda. Motion to approve the agenda. You know, a motion in a second, any discussion? Although the favor say aye, although the don't approve the white sign, no computer. All right, let's move on to public coming. Which one we want to do first?
I mean, that's all I can do.
Yeah.
I finished that again.
Then before we go to the public hearing, yeah, okay. All right, this point. Let me, seven point. The first, uh, person to speak is Mr. Shireley. Come up and, um, you can name the great place.
Yeah, that's a good.
You don't need any answers.
My name is Chris Sandra Shireley. I address in fifty eighth older road, Hollywood City, North Carolina, two seven three four. I'm here to vote. I want to publicly thank Mr. Ray for his audit of the water department. I appreciate your diligence and working that out. I was one of the residents to receive a water bill an amount of five hundred twenty one dollars and ninety six cents for one month. Um. My second reason for being here is just some reassurance that it won't happen again. And speaking to other residents, I found the common thing. We were all told we had water leaks. We needed to get a plumber. And if the plumber found a leak, our bills would be adjusted. But the six people I talked to, none of us had leaks. Our bills were not adjusted for that, but because of your audit, they were adjustable. Yeah. There are two things I count on. I trust Duke Energy. I trust the water department to charge me what I, for the usage I have. I don't know if I can do that with the water department anymore. So if it's a matter of I have to go out and read my meter each month, not my job, but I'm willing to do it. If I need to start trying to count gallons of water we're using in my house, again, not my job, but I'm willing to do it. I almost had a heart attack when I got my water bill. And when I called to tell me that I had a leak, and then I get a plumber out there who tells me if you had a leak of this amount, six times the amount of water when we use. He said you would have water standing under your house, spraying your yard. So the evidence was there in the very beginning. There was no leak. And after several phone calls, I was told that they went back and looked at my bill for the last year and I had been under charged. That is another common story with the six other people I talked to. So we just need some honesty and transparency within the water department. I mean, we don't have any option. The neighborhood I lived in, I live in, the whales were condemned years ago, so we have no other option. Um, but we just need some reassurance that what happened the last few months will not happen. What is your bill normally? My bill ranges from seventy five dollars to a hundred and seventy dollars. I've never questioned it. I just pay it. Five hundred and twenty one dollars a question. Yeah, so if I had an idea of how much, how much it should be, then I would have known something was wrong. But I did not. I don't look at how much water I use. I just look at the total, and that's what I pay.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Missy Amber. Want to take your name and address, please.
I'm Cindy Penner, one one oh eight oh Highway two, four, West Silver City, North Carolina, two seven three four four. I'm here speaking to you with concern about the direction of the town. I have seen Silver City in some of the best times. Man, traction was booming, and I have seen it when plants have closed and gone. Silver has bounced back with leadership and vision. It concerns me to see some knee jerk reactions with no direction. You hire a new town manager that hires consultants because this is inexperienced and makes decisions without hearing the advice of the consultant. Would it not be better to take the consultancy, add it to the salary, and get a town manager that has been through this growth before? Silver City does not have time to train. Wolf Speed came to Silver City with the confidence that Silver City would work with them and together accomplish and meet their needs. There has been an endless meeting to accomplish. Why would you change things up now? Bring in a new person to planning. Jack Meadows is the one Wolf Speed and many others have been working with and have confidence in. I agree, planning department will be in need of help. Under Jack's direction, I feel it should be the one building. He should be the one building a strong team. He knows the U D O better than anyone. Infrastructure is the main obstacle. This town's basis. It affects everyone and all business. You need to get a handle on it now. All of the commissioners need to be willing to put in overtime and lots of it. Haggis are prepared for you. Research and find solutions now, which can afford to wait.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay. We'll close with a comment. So that, now, we open the public hearing. That's the open, reopen, open to. Right. Jeff Meadows.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to do it in page four. Staff has provided minimum, of course, as Mayor State was going through the hearing on the case already, so I'm not going to do that with all things that are discussed, but I can go ahead and answer them questions. I am going to highlight things that were added at the central activity board, their staff's direction, their additional information regarding for you to go make a decision on this. First page, nothing new. I just added a few things that are attached, things like U D O, ordinance that we talked about, I know it's filed on attached documents. There is a new recommended or new condition sheet that was prepared by staff and was signed by the applicant. You'll see that later on. There were some emails between myself and the applicant, some questions that we wanted to gather and information was provided. And then two other things. One, we did an investigation of two sites that are similar, the concrete plant in Sanford and one in Pittsburgh. We took a look at, and I'll go to that in a second. And then there was a zoning map that provided the change in additional heavy industrial zone properties in South City. All right, so quickly, I'm going to give you page numbers and we'll flip through, and please don't go back. Let's go to page twenty eight. Department of U D O, we probably limited about this, I'm going to reiterate human, people with a big understanding about the noise ordinance on page twenty eight. Right, the, if it's only a single industrial, the decimal levels are fifty between seven A M and seven P M. That's your daytime. And if it is afternoon or night, fifty and seventy, the maximum is forty five. So I just want to share that as, that's in our current ordinance requirements for heavy industrial. Pages twenty nine, thirty, and thirty one, I wrote in thirty two, the twenty nine and thirty two are just some additional things that were brought up, and I wanted to share it with the board. Page two ninety five talks about the reasoning for screen, the reading the board, the top of these ordinance of year, getting rid of it. It says we explain between two lots, letting the transition from one lot to another of noise, dust, and glare, that's a topic that came up, I thought I would share that. And there are a number of other reasons for screen, obviously, for privacy. Uh. Page thirty is, what a high pay screen is required, and of course, that's what's required for this project is a piping screen around the perimeter of the property. So there's a couple of options, and that's found out in the video. And there's an illustration of that type A on page thirty one, a couple of illustrations of options you can use in type A. And then lastly, back to vehicle combinationary services, it talks about having a combinationary service that doesn't have dust issue. But that's another topic I remember hearing during the meeting. So there's ways to put together a parking agent you won't add to us for a little bit. Okay, moving on, page thirty seven, the condition sheet was updated. That was signed by the applicant on November first. On page thirty seven, letters E through H are new. Um, and there are not anything new to the site plan, it's just new this condition. The proposed bashing silo is located in a minimum of hundred and fifty feet from the property one, and that was what was proposed, and they're going to maintain that distance. The proposed storage bins are located in a minimum of forty feet from boundary one. And the proposed dumps are located in a minimum of fifty feet from that one. So that's giving you a couple of measurements that they would meet those minimums when they're popular. And lastly, we got asked about height. We provided a seventy feet tall plant, that's how I call the plant. There's some more here. Pages sixty three and sixty four, some email traffic between me and the applicant, and I asked some other questions about dust control noise, that's what I'm asking. We got some. And make the truck, height of plant, playful. Page sixty six, sixty eight is information that applicant provided, it's illustrations for a concrete plant, I think, right from their manufacturer. And so I won't get into loads of them, that's more specific to the design of the plant set. And then, for the last bit of it is, we took a look at the location. I've got, okay, starting on page sixteen nine, we look at Sanford Park. And it shows the locations that are coming out. We've got aerial photography, we've got also what the joint usage would be, as you'll see on page seven, that's a Google map. They also provided zoning map, land use plan maps for all of these. And just chillingly speaking, I think the location is initially in the industrial area off of eighty seven title one and off of Deep River Road. The zoning map is a mix of industrial zoning and other, other like usage, as well as the planning plan maps. And then, starting on page seventy three, it's a photo, so you can see what that plant looks like from the property. That's what, we took all the photos from the end of the property. And the last piece of information in the packet related to Sanford runs on page seventy nine, we downloaded a decimal meter app on my iPhone. And this is the readings we got. It was about twelve o'clock, I put it twenty, I think it's a Friday, and the number we received on average was sixty seven decimal. The minimum was sixty five, max of seventy one point seven, and the peak of seventy eight. So that was the best reading we could see with my phone app. There was some truck activity happening at the time. I think it was called, where's, nothing I think is the word used possibly, or loading and loading a, a, a semi truck. Also do the video.
But you were on the truck.
I was at the ride, wasn't I?
Not, not out in the bound.
No, I was about a hundred feet from the operation that was, that was running, that's my plan. I put that in that, I said, yeah, that, that, I did a measurement after all this. That gives you an opportunity to have to like the word in the panel. Jennifer, can you play the first video? We've got a video so you can see. Thank you. That's a quick one, but then, so this is, did it separate? That truck on my side is, it's pretty active, there's some of the, you know, I think it was, what was he here?
Yes, so a question that, so when you say pages seventy eight is out in the truck before my, or is this?
There's a reading, um. I'll be hard to say. There, there wasn't. All right.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Yeah, because we're a traffic.
All right, this is, this is, um. Located off of East Street, in east of the forehouse. Southern states is the neighboring property to this. Folks might know where that is off of, small tree. Got aerial photo and Google map to let you give you the proximity to that general area. The, uh. Light industrial is the zoning, and industrial, the name is plan map. And then, of course, we provided some photos that you can get for. For the sample. And those are pages, uh. And then we provided a measurement report from the decimal reading, and this was about one o'clock, and left on the center, get the end of the Pittsburgh. And average city one, minimum fifty days, max forty four. In the same distance, about a hundred feet from that operation of a truck is working at right now, in front of you. Last part of my presentation is just a couple of zoning map from our ordinance table ninety one and ninety three. This you can not give heavy industrial zoning in the general area of Silver City. Obviously, the Penn side, mid-state, downtown, heavy industrial zone area near the airport, it's heavy industrial zone standard H I for at least twenty plus years. And then, at Central Carolina Business Campus, that was only heavy industrial, that impression of that business campus. Um, that's for all the new information. I believe that covers it. The worksheets are as they were before. There are, um. Several worksheets, and as we talked about before, on page ninety four is an amendment to the ordinance that would be consistent with the land of them. Page ninety six is a order statement to be inconsistent, and the following worksheet with different data were hit. And obviously, if there was much support of the, um, importance, it's an option reject. I mean, that's a third option for the board. Um. Of course, I'm always there. I'm mentioning the things that I overlook. Oh, yeah. There was a couple pieces of information that the applicant shared, and I just wanted to point that out. Bowery, somewhere from twenty three and thirty dollars per hour, that was a guaranteed forty hour pay per week, I think. Investment of about three million dollars. The trucks are twenty one feet long, and, um. The applicant also provided the video on YouTube that I put a link to within our package for, um. That concludes my presentation. Might ask any questions?
That was fresh, I remember, the room or the fans, was it, was it, what's requirement on it?
So, uh, there's no, it's required per se, but the applicant had proposed. I think, right, install an eight foot tall opaque fence, chain link with slats, and sliding gate along the entire perimeter of the dog.
Okay, that's going to be like, now there.
Yes, sir.
With the slats.
Yeah, that was, that was what was shared with me during the, our sessions, very some of the my ears.
Right. Is that need the type A?
It does. So type A would be, let's go to that section of, um, you know, page thirty and thirty one. What you're looking at is a combination of fencing and landscaping. So if you put up a, this is a, this is a, that's going to meet that shrubbery requirement, you will. But you also need to put on trees. Trees would be, if they're small, you replace those. If you fit on the center, if they're large trees, you can stay in that for them. So it's a combination of fencing and tree. That's, and that's pretty much what you see on page thirty one, the, the middle option, if you will. That looks to me like a, probably a large tree with a fence.
But in the email, it said they don't have plans for landscaping, they don't leave enough trees that are probably there.
I let, I let applicant answer that. I think I understand what he meant was, um, let me read that, that's on page sixty three. We do not have landscaping plans, so they're leaving enough trees to prevent the plant from being visible from the road and living property. So the way we've interpreted that over the past is that if there's existing landscaping that meets the requirement of the type A, Haggis believe that would be efficient. And so if remaining trees are seventy five feet on center and a fence, then that would be, that would meet that standard. And we've made a system of that for a long time, while existing landscaping would meet.
So if they're, so, they're posing, they're posing to, 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 um. Eat the thirty foot buff, the thirty foot vegetative buffer. Does that thirty foot vegetative buffer, as it exists today, meet that, meet that screening requirement?
I don't know. I hadn't, hadn't looked at it. But I would say yes, we would obviously put that on the applicant to say, yes, it will be a part of the plan. And when we get out there and it doesn't, then it would have to be amended into the plan to go into the gap. So.
I know there are several residential areas close by. Um. What is the closest proximity of houses near that place?
Well, we know the lot boundary.
Fine, but I know there's houses behind there, I know there's houses on close.
But the measurement has to be from the lot boundary or, or decimal measure, not from the house. Okay.
But I can get a, quickly, try to find out.
Well, I'm just curious. Did you have any questions from the rest that's, that's close by there? Do you have any questions from the rest that's as close as there?
We've got that one email that you shared last time.
Right, and that's all.
That's the only one I'm, I'm aware of. Um. Yeah, I don't have these as lots, I mean, I can manage.
So, I've done this through E I N and posted up, the fact that the house is probably one, probably one, one. Uh, but the two closest houses, then if you have a cheap plan, they're in those houses for their plans, and then, uh, very closely.
I remember something like that. Okay. All right. Yes, please. That's the thing that's in your. If, have you had any, um, any of your.
Paul's here?
No, she did not. Other question you can ask. What, what's this, you'll put up a sign out there on, at the gate where you come in, to be somewhere to that one in the picture, that you do the plant sample, just build.
I think we talked about a sign, and I wonder if there's an original sign. Any form of signage that we use to be screened, I mean, we're not trying to be flashy or vague, and we just possibly let be a sign on the front of the gate that just shows that it's heritage time. But yeah, we're not, we're not going to get with the, the, distracted, the sign.
Jeff, what's the, um, consequence of there's repeated consistent violation of the noise ordinance?
The, um. Complaint, question by someone nearby, knowing the investigation. And follow the orders, it says, of course, I've got, it's a little more complicated than making the orders, I think, using my iPhone app. And if it is in violation, then we send a notice violation letter to the property. And that gives you about ten days to bring it into compliance. And hopefully create some sort of, uh. Way of, of bringing, creating a program to, that, that's the level of lower it's supposed to be. And if we don't have compliance, being it's a zoning ordinance violation, it would be a one hundred dollar day, civil code for that violation. And you guys are familiar with how that works. If we don't get compliance, after a certain period of time, I, I shared with county attorney. And then he would pitch a county board and give direction on how to pursue that number.
Is that complaint driven, or is it checked to?
So, um. You know, the way our ordinance enforcement department runs, we've got a handful of more things that we do actively with it. And so right now, noise complaints are not, and we actively look for them. I mean, they are, that can change. That's a direction that's a, for our, our package of enforcement now, agreement. enforcement now, agreement of order, which they have there, they will.
From what I saw, we had Park Shop and Center, did that get upon, or requesting attorney's fees to adjust, um, the penalty?
The wean that, um, was one, the Park Shop and Center, for the, um, no, it was not, I don't know, parking lot, just.
I think you go to the court, all that will do is that.
We did not, we, we, we have been informed, so most of the, I guess, some of the conversations, we give them a letter.
Other questions, Jeff? I know, come on down. All right, not anymore on that, we'll go next, uh, thank you, I'm sure I'm going to just murder.
It's okay, it's, I can stand up, you know, my name, address.
Yes, it's not an easy name. Yeah, so go right ahead, I know I'm gonna murder.
My name is Muncie Weaving, and my address is Fort Worth, Allen Road, Sanford, North Carolina, one of the partners with Heritage Concrete, and I basically just wanted to come tonight, and we've, we've been in business since nineteen eighty-six, I've been with the company over thirty years, and, um, we have been a very, very good corporate citizen for my thirty-plus year tenure here, involved in many, many aspects of our town, we, we sponsor sports teams, we have given cost prices to churches throughout our town, have come to us and asked if we can help, we've always helped, I mean, things like that, we've provided discounts for all through town, for any kind of playground facilities, for our high schools, um, we, we have supported all of our local charities and some instances such as Boys and Girls Club, and one of the biggest bits, so, um, I just want you to know, we, we, we will go out of our way, not only, we're, we're gonna follow the rule of law, we're gonna do the right thing, we're, we're not absentee owners, I, I personally go to our plants on a regular basis, try to make sure that they look clean, good, they're fitting in where they're located, and I mean, and I'm not just saying it to say it, this, this is the reality, we, we have been, we have not had complaints, if anyone had any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them about that, but, I mean, I think that if you were to ask anyone in the two, in Part County, in Recomy, where we do business, that you'd see that you'd probably get very good feedback about us, um, we, we, we do have an office in Sanford, that sits basically probably about a hundred feet from our plant, I'm in our office every day, and unless the truck is literally pulled right behind the office, which is just a small brick building, and the truck is mixing concrete, it, it is really the, I, I haven't measured the decibel, but as far as being a hundred, probably to a hundred and fifty feet from the plant itself, I don't hear those trucks being loaded, um, I do hear them if they are literally on top, but I think that you, you can't hear a lot of it, because if there's highway traffic, and we have a busy road in front of our traffic, well, it grounds out the noise, but it's considerably louder, big trucks, jing brakes, which are those, you hear the sauce sounding and stuff like that, considerably louder than just our everyday buzz of our guys in the plant, um, but other than that, I, I just, as I said, I, I just felt like it was important to know that we will be accountable, we'll be available, um, if anything needs to be done, it will be done, that, that is how we have always done business, we don't want to embarrass ourselves, regardless of where we do business, we want to make sure that we are good corporations, and I, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about anything that involves our, 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 yes, sir?
Um, the information that we have in our packet shows in the Sanford location, but then it also shows its foreign, that's Chandler, what about the, um, uh, the one in Parton County, uh, location, uh, is it, how close is it to residential?
We, we are in, hey, well, it's, it, it sits right off of Highway three oh one, and, and it's really not surrounded by a whole lot, we initially purchased it about twenty-five years ago, um, it was a building supply, and the concrete plant was there, and there's probably about three industrial buildings, uh, if you're, they're facing three oh one, we are on McKay Avenue, and we have a neighborhood that's probably, I would say, five hundred to six hundred feet in front of us, and it is abundant, I mean, there's multiple houses, and we've, in thirty, well, in twenty-five years that we've had that operation, we, we've never, ever had anyone complain or question the, the noise level, and I mean, and that includes, you know, sometimes when we've done work in the middle of the night, which has become, uh, much less frequent, um, just, just because it's a lot harder to maintain, for each day, we'll bring one home, possibly at two and three o'clock in the mornings, and it's just one of those things that doesn't happen very frequently, we've not, we've not had a, uh.
I was, excuse me, wait a minute. I was just gonna say, hours of operation, I know you said that, uh, in the middle of the night, now, I think when we received the information, it wasn't anything that early in the.
Right, generally, we've been starting, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, in the past, yeah.
That's what burnout, the other companies, they come to us because they want normal hours.
Yeah, so, we, we've had to limit our hours of operations to, to maintain a good quality work, so, most of the time, about as early as we've been starting, it is between five-thirty and six o'clock, we'll bring guys in, get the trucks filling and stuff like that, most of our, we, we do a lot of business in Moore County, and so we're, we're happy to bring in guys, and we can start fairly early, but, but five-thirty's been about as early as we, we started, or brought in, brought in people, we haven't started this, so, patchy.
But I know, um, yeah, the early hours, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, the, the, the decimals are definitely, uh, were held to a, a higher standard earlier, and we, we will, well, clearly, we, we will have to meet the standards when we define, we don't, we don't wanna be fine, we don't have to be, so, we, we will make sure we stay in check.
So. What, what do you guys do about this, when it comes out, when the test comes out with the trucks?
Well, I, what we've done at both of our plants, the entire area surrounding the plant is all concrete, and we have guys that, we have an employee at each plant, basically, what they do is they, they, they're called yardmen, and they work around the yard, they keep their, everything up, they keep it clean, they keep the dust out, um, and it's, it's a non-stop, five-day-a-week job to do it, but we do it, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's, that's something that we were able to do later on, I mean, basically, we, we, um, we didn't always have concrete in our Sanford plant, but that's, we, we probably put that in about twenty years, we, we couldn't stand the dust ourselves, it was bad, it makes a mess, so we, the whole area now, there would be, it's all gonna be concrete, and that's, that's, that's an important, and it's a good sales point for our business also, but, but it also looks better, it's illuminated at night, the, the plant's bright, it lowers, um, the possibility of people getting onto the property, going to their own property and stealing things and stuff like that, um, so it's, it's a, it's a good thing, it, it will be, um, you know, we, we will do a, a privacy fence and stuff like that, just to make sure that we're protected, um, but as I said, for the thirty-plus years I've been involved in this business, we have, we have considered, we have been considered very, very good citizens. Yes, sir?
I've got, um, two concerns, uh, that I'd like to go with you. The first is the decibel level, uh, 'cause I don't wanna play into the best case now, but the worst case scenario, I hope it turns out better, I'd like it to be a win-win, but, you know, the, the, the noise level that the plant creates, I, we do start getting complaints, and they're repetitive, we get into a spiral down cycle where can't fix it in ten days, and we have to give you a hundred dollars, easily, um, I don't want a relationship with that, even if I've been great for decades, to turn bad from this, so I'd like to address it upfront, so, if we do have to do that, or, and if it continues, and we have to send you a letter that, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna permit you, um, what's gonna be the fix, what's gonna be the reaction?
Well, I mean, of course, our, our plan is, is not to ever get to that point, um, I mean, quite frankly, um, I think you will see that we are tracking just by traffic on sixty-four.
So you think you're under fifty?
I would think so, and I, I, I would think that we can probably consistently be in that range, if I am sitting in my building, which is not a very well-built building, and I'm approximately a hundred and fifty to maybe two hundred feet, when our trucks are being loaded, I can't hear them being loaded, what I can hear is that they are directly fifteen feet behind the back of the building, near all my offices, and they're running full blast, mixing the concrete and being washed, it's loud, and it, and it's loud enough that I, I can hear it, um, but, uh, again, that's, we would have to be pulling up next to people's houses and, and mixing for them to get, you know, to afford to become problematic, I mean, it is, as I said, it, it is less than what you hear daily going down the road.
You, the problem is that, you know, the plant, you're not operating, and not a, or, well, you can change that operation without significant, um, cost to your company, and so at that point, it becomes too late, problem already exists.
But we also can't stand being fined year in, year out, I mean, that, that's not something that we can do.
If you all think you're under fifty, I would say you, sure.
Yeah, we, we will have to really, I mean, that's, that's something that we will, you know, we, we are looking to do this, I mean, this isn't gonna be something that's gonna be done tomorrow, um.
If you create a, it could take a great relationship and turn it bad.
Absolutely, and, I mean, and that is not how we do this.
That's gonna be a lose, lose, we are, we're, we're.
And we, we have not ever done business that way, we, we have directly across former Sanford plant, I would say five, five hundred feet is an apartment building where people have been living for the entire time, we have never had a complaint from them about the level of noise.
So, and that brings me to my second issue, um, I haven't used my, my, I haven't laid a lot of cases in, probably twenty years, and longer, there's a lot of cases regarding nuisance and a person's right to quiet enjoyment of the property, and in particular, I believe there was a case where the neighbors were already there, and a pig processing, uh, operation came in, and they sued for a loss of quiet enjoyment, and that's a, that's a toward, and so the town has some, some shelter under the sovereign meaning doctrine, but we don't have it, but a contract law, this is a clause or contractual nature, the nature of this thing, we offer certain conditions, you agree to it, so I'm worried that, if skillfully, if there was enough complaints among the citizens, and if they got together to bring that lawsuit, that is so, uh, skillfully crafted complaint, um, could bring the town, you have the party, once again, I haven't read this, this line of case in a long time, um, but, I think we should look down on the front, and take those, getting a lawsuit and then reacting.
No, we, we, we've never, again, in the history of our company, we, we have, we have always stayed ahead of this exact type of thing, I mean, I, I don't want to live in an area where I am considered a polluter of, of water, of earth, or of sound, I, I don't wanna participate in that, that, that's never how we've done business, and, and we're not gonna start, if, if we do in fact establish a business here, that will not be, hope it is established here.
If there is a, if there is a lawsuit, then obviously citizens are upset, you're coming, gets mud on his face, we get mud on ours, it's a huge, um, and like I said, I haven't laid up on a case in a long time, but I know it's out there.
Well, there, there are means, things that we can do to lower the noise levels, and it may, you know, cause us further investment, but again, we're not, we're not jumping into this, we, we have looked, we, we do have equipment that we are considering, and, and it's, it's a much more modern and nicer setup than what we have at either of our current plants, and, um, uh, basically, in general, equipment that we use is newer, better quality, it makes a lot less noise, it's quieter, so, uh, again, I, I think within the distance that we're talking about, we, we will be, if, we, we should be able to maintain the levels, and, and we will do what we need to do to make sure that we're within that, because we, we clearly don't want to come here and create a problem for ourselves, I mean, we, we, we would not wanna be in a position where we cannot operate our plant, it's just like if we have a truck break down, it, it, it's like throwing a wrench into a bicycle, it's, it creates a big problem for us, so, we're not gonna get, you know, spend a huge amount of money to put up a concrete plant that we can't run because we're creating, we're, we're having a noise problem, so.
I think, and I think those line of cases talk about it, can't just be an economic detriment, um, so we have to, in this space, you know, facts, that be coupled with the noise and dust, so, you're telling me that you're, you're, what you're putting here is gonna be better than what you're putting on the other side?
Yes, sir, I mean, we, we have, we replaced our Sanford plant twenty years ago, the plant done is probably a forty-year-old concrete plant, um, now, we have made significant modifications, uh, but, um, but, well, what we're looking at now is, is a much lower, uh, lower impact type of the setup, easier for us to work on the setup, um, and, uh, again, as I said, we, we have lots of things around us where people could be affected by noise, and we, we have, we've never, ever had anybody complain and, and say, you guys are gonna have to do something different, because the noise, as I said, literally, I hear more traffic inside of the building where I work than I can hear my own business.
I said, the tough question, based on this discussion, I appreciate having this down low.
Yes, sir.
Um, would your company be, would you consider, be willing to at least consider entering into an indemnification hold on, and surrender with the town in case a lawsuit does occur?
Yeah, I mean, I, that would be something that we would need to sit down with our attorney and make sure that we're, we're.
Once again, I'm not intending it will.
Pardon me?
I'm not intending it will, I, I don't have this involved, but I'd rather play in worst-case scenario, and hopefully experience a really good scenario, but I'd rather both our sides play in for worst case.
Yeah, I, I would, that would be something that we would have to sit down with our lawyer, we would have to look at what you're proposing, and make sure it's something that is, um, that, that, I, I don't foresee it being an issue, um, but.
Based on the new technology that you're gonna put down?
Yeah, I mean, I, as I said, I would have to, I guess what makes it complicated is without, you almost have to put the concrete plant up and then tweak it, but I, I just don't, based on what we currently have, which is not as good as what we would be putting up, I don't foresee us having. I don't foresee us having a noise issue, because as I said, even in in our plant and done, which is a louder plant, and it is in a residential, we have residences. Very close, within five to six hundred feet of the plant. There has never been a problem and with. And and it's on a gravel road. Even though our concrete plant is in fact all around it is concrete. We've never had a complaint about dust. We've never had a complaint about the trucks driving. We're we're still consistent about keeping our guys. Doing this speed limit around, especially in any type of a residential type of development, which which we do. Have close to our plant. And that's a never. And and that plant's probably been there for forty years. We've never had a complaint.
How's the new, the new technology going to tell it regardless of the dust? I mean, talk about the noise. How's it with regards to the dust?
Well, we would probably install on this particular plant. I mean, depending on. Yeah. That information changes back to their house and that's seen. Uh, that's the quote this has. It has information useful. It's reading. About their, let's call it here.
That, I would, I would say. What's the distance between the apartment building? And where the plant would be located? Because you know, we have all those parts. I've heard about the apartment. And where the plant would be.
That is, that's a pretty good difference, Steve. Water line that's on this property is about the middle of the line.
Okay.
And this plant's on the east side of the line. So. Uh, you got the water line to the railroad tracks, and then a buffer between railroad and apartments. That one, the end might have a maybe. Uh, it may have more together, but we're talking. The fence with them.
Like a mile?
None of them.
Hundred thousand feet.
Yeah, I would think it's five hundred plus. So it's, it's just the apartment. Much closer to the residence.
So it's closer to the houses.
Yeah, it's probably.
But then that line there, it's plenty of space to move that.
Yeah, water line splits that part.
Maybe I wish. Um. The concrete footwell, you 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 want anything, you said, footwork down. Where if you got a load of concrete on there, it's down, you know. You got a giant load of concrete, you got to fall in there, jack that one out, never break that. And it's also occasionally, that's the maintenance that we've done, because the mix and the tamer has to be. And occasionally, somebody makes a mistake and orders too much, and. You can't always find a place for it. Oh. What do you do? Or what what arrangements or provisions have you made for this excess concrete, or when you have to clean it out? Heaven forbid you have an issue.
What what you do? I mean, and and it's, it's something that we deal with all of the time. Um. Uh, in the past, we've had people that wanted to fill. Um. And we have literally. People filling. Little areas on their property that they wanted. They they can fill stuff like that. I mean, what we have done in 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 the past, we we have an area that we will put the concrete. And then we'll break it up, and we have guys that come and buy it and take it and put it on people's driveways, roads, different things like that. I mean, we we don't accept, like, people aren't going to break up sidewalks and things like that and bring it to us, but when when we do get a few yards of concrete left over, we we have an area we'll use. Put it. And it'll let it set up, and we'll break it up, and we'll. Give it away to people who use it. Filling holes, filling up driveways, putting them off, put on pine nails. If you name it, there's been multiple uses. Uh, and yes, I mean, on an occasion, we we, in fact, we had it happen. Uh, it was extremely expensive, and it was unfortunate. One of the brand-new trucks, we did have a load of concrete that did set up, and then we had to have it jack that one out, and then it was the same kind of thing. Pile of broken up concrete, you have to dispose of it. Um, so we, we always have people that are wanting material. We have, we have uh, guys that will haul it away.
But. We're going to just, uh, storage. Storage space to eat from there. You know, I hopefully it's going to be in the back.
Yeah, I mean, and again, we've. We will make sure that it is. That it's not going to affect anybody's view. I mean, and we don't let it get very high. We're constantly. About on a monthly basis, we're 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 getting it cleaned up and hauled away. And um. And again, there's a high probability that we will have someone that will say, you know, if you have extra concrete, I've got places to put. We we have that going on for you. Uh, maybe that people want.
I've seen some skeletons. Yes, we're that excess here, right? From the place, or anywhere, everybody can see it. That's our answer.
We're, we're. We we have it, but it's it's really a, it's it's. High in their office to the left, where it's it's not visible from the road. We we, and we say, we we try to keep it cleaned up on a regular basis. I I don't want to look at it myself. I mean, it's a mess. I don't, I don't want to have it there. And, oh, I mean, we have people that come, we have a. In both of our places, contracts, we have people that come, grass is mowed on on weekly basis. Everything is blown off, all of their bushes are trimmed. I mean, we we have sidewalks, I mean. I mean, we we're not. We we've not gone about it in a. Time to just cheaply, you know. Get away with whatever we can. That that's not how we've done this thing. Uh, we've. We've been fortunate, we've been successful um by by being good corporate citizens and 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 investing in the communities that we go into. And as a result, that that's that's paid us with difficulty. I mean, that's that's important. May people see your name when you're sponsoring sporting events, or when your. Your signs up at Little League games and stuff like that. I mean, that sounds possibly trivial, but it's it's it does mean something when you're, you know, best in the game.
I'm just like, uh. Um. So we plan on, you're not going to be able to see the plant. That's why we're leaving a street and we're having a long driveway, and the whole property is lit right now, like fifteen-year-old growth and trees, or. These are big pine trees. Four grand. The plan, ideally, before you know, water line is there, we're going to be very middle of this spot, and really. That water line probably be pushed over a little bit, and it'll top from the water line. So if there is a pile of concrete, it definitely will be beautiful. Um, then lately, we started recycling concrete for the midday. They take this stuff and haul it off, and they pump it in these machines, and they grind it up into a bunch of little rocks, and they crush gravel. Actually, it's kind of nice, kind of white, driveways, construction plants. That's a new emerging market, um. And they can get it from us for free. We're trying to get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They'll come and they'll they'll haul it off, and they crush it. They make. Good amount of money from taking away three hundred. I mean, it's. It's a good thing. I mean, I, it's it's a good business to be in this country. I mean, it's essentially recycled.
Other questions?
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Then we got any further questions?
Want to clarify something. I appreciate you asking a question about. The uh, spike in the, uh, business. Something I wanted to relate to. Video and the. Part that I gave you on the, you take it. They don't, they don't. And, but I did find a couple of the ones, I think I read several, and there were grass, the one that I had in the family that had a grass. But you will see a spike it, um. Just a second or two, so I don't know what that could have been, could have been a, I don't know if you're, you know, it could have been there. And something else that, um, I want to make sure we're on the same page. Based on the presentation we're remembering, you heard. Um, and the conditions, it says hours of operation is six to eight in the morning. So if that needs to be five thirty, then it's something that we want to switch or hold on to. Keep that in mind. Number two, uh, in in my look at the patent, I think. Uh, the patent was really good, and our comment taken. The only concrete I'm aware of on the site is the driveway turnout. I don't see the sixty-four registered. The remainder of the yard, I believe, is gravel. And so I heard that it was going to be concrete around the plant. Uh. And maybe, we'll make sure there's clear attention there. And then, um. That that was, to prove it ain't on, I'm sure, um.
Yeah, I mean, we. We may briefly have a gravel area around it, but more than likely, when we set this thing up, the whole thing surrounding the plant will be concrete, because it's. It's a, it's a mess, if we don't. We can't work with, if it weren't in gravel or in mud or anything like that, it would just create that. So, yeah, we will be. The areas around the plant will be, um, that's, that's like. You need to say areas around the plant, you you would be speaking of work areas. Yeah, I mean, where where our trucks will be going around the plant, moving around that area, we we will have that. We we will be concrete all.
Do the plants have initially gravel? We are a concrete plant. We can pour concrete, but it wasn't going to be like our initial investment. Um. Eventually. We will be all concrete again.
Like, states that.
Yeah, twenty-three, it's just picked up from, uh, from the highway, it's quite a bit of, uh, concrete. Which, but that's, that was my observation, and that might be by the day that it was. Stacked around the concrete and driveway handling to project. But our, probably that's given to us for our review. Each of this same apron, and the remainder of the yard is gravel. It's about there.
Is there a way to memorial, memorialize that, based on the conversations that we've had? I mean. Rather than just make yes, I'd be, whatever, that there'll be some kind of timeframe that I, you know. For them, yeah. If we don't put it in there, we'll all be gone at some point in time. That's all I can go on. And that way it'll be memorialized.
Well, to clear that up. The staff is going to make the, how that needs to be ordered, right? And order of prime is to gravel that yard. So if there's anything above and beyond that, it would need to be memorialized in addition. It's very something that, and and the board, so. Yes, that that would be my, leaving my comments, I guess.
Yeah. The add condition, if we can come up with a word. And, uh.
Okay, other question? Anything after that, or even?
Uh, um, there, sir, you've been close though, you know. During the board's discussion, they may have a. An additional question. And so. You can leave it open.
Yeah, we discuss.
Yeah, unless you have.
And then we can, if there's an issue that comes over. You know, with the cans, that's what you're saying.
You could do that, but just so that you can still engage with. Yeah, if you need to.
Discussion.
During your internal session. Or you could close it. I I see that more and more being the case, those leaving it open. Uh. Files open, leaving it open. Then, yeah. That's just, we won't be in trouble doing that. I mean, it'll be, it'll be a part of the management. All right. That's, we won't be in trouble with it. All right, well, I only advise the council, I would leave the public here in open. And, um, so, um. Fisher. What's the, what are y'all thinking? Let me.
Like I said, I. I'd plan for the worst and get the best, and. I want to know, I want to think. I want to know that we're going to make it just at a level so we don't have to be in a situation. Where we're creating acumen with a. Forty, fifty-year, maybe sixty-year apartment, you know. Um. I want to know, particularly if there are one that sticks. Then that drops it with five, six, six, four. And like I said, I haven't read that line of case in a long time, and. Uh. I kind of believe we look more through it, um. I'm not saying it's probable, but. It has to be possible. As I mentioned, yes. But I haven't read those cases. Twenty-five years.
You've got a long time for me, too. I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But in my experience, particularly when I was with the firm with Jeff Wilk. There's recent cases for noise. This is, again, this is our experience. They're hard, and we have. I mean, it's hard to.
It goes forward, I think, for, and always tell, tell, and you, and then you got the new technology, maybe there's not good news, dust. So these are all kind of factors that. I don't know.
We also don't think we can know. I mean, we, it.
There's some things.
We're looking at hypotheticals, and I don't know that we can.
There's some things we can't know.
Yes.
With new technology.
Exactly.
But we can still put ourselves in the best position possible. All right.
Yeah, for me, it's a part of real policy, you know, having, you know. We're going to have the concrete work area, maybe not right off. I don't like to do that. But I'd like to have that memorial line somewhere that we know that's where we're driving. So now, however, we do that.
I think it's a good concrete, and, um, concrete won't manage to. You know, the, um, work, work areas around the plant will eventually be concrete.
Will be concrete?
Will eventually become concrete. Gravel areas will eventually become concrete.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done it everywhere we've been. It's really. We have a difficult time operating with what happened. I mean, our our trucks are heavy, they're all down in gravel and stuff like that, so it's, it's not. Usable to keep it that way. I mean, we we might just start off right now. Uh. I doubt that we can start off that way, but that that's how we've grown it up. I mean, in the past, as I said, it's a lot easier, and it just. Looks a lot better when we've got it all concrete.
It's so, I don't have any question. The current is, I mean, required to. Required to ground.
But, um, the gravel we're talking about for. Parking for dump trucks and large vehicles. It'll be improvised.
Oh, it's improvised, I want.
But concrete or gravel is going to be.
Still meet their requirement.
And they're putting a soil, so they're handling all this thing. The part to do appropriately, for that time. Perfect.
The two things we've talked about so far are. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, make sure I'm thinking right. This is going to have to go back, and language is going to have to be developed by town attorney and town staff. These two things that we, you know, talked about. And then we're going to have to get back together and with that and do whatever. The, that correct.
Okay, three.
So, so, so are you talking about the, um, the, the, the amendment to the, the conditions? One.
Yeah.
And then the o, the other was.
Lowest.
Oh, around a, an indemnity clause. I don't think we can, I don't think we can, I don't think we want to hold that up. If that's something we can, I think can be discussed outside of the, the, um. At least my, my interpretation, we could, we could discuss that outside of, and not make it as a condition for a, um, change in the zoning. I guess that, that's something we, I think, would be outside of that.
What you want to talk about?
I'm not familiar with the. A condition. One of the conditions, I mean, it doesn't mean that you can't do it. I've never seen that. It's going to be. Laws is a position.
Yeah.
Well.
But that, but we could, we could work on something like that, which would, which would ease, you know, ease the mind of. Mr. Cleveland.
And and once again, it's based on, you know, not handling this case any more time.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know, yeah, yeah. Well, that part of it, yeah, it would be considered agreeable.
For me, some of the years, yeah.
And but if they disagree to.
Agree to, they want to.
If, if on the indemnization, division came later, but after this is approved. Then, what would be the consideration?
Additional consideration.
For, uh, I don't think you have consideration.
So what we had to do. The. Compliment. I understand one of them, you know. The second one seemed like it was great, big gray areas that are sort of like what you said, that to do it after the fact, how much teeth is going to have?
But there's no considerations, not.
Right. Both parties have to agree to do something. We'd be asking one party to agree to something, the other party not giving, and, uh. We know that's, that's, that's a, that's really important.
Um. So just, uh, you know. Like I said, I want. Like I said, I want, my goal is to have a win-win. Own plan for the worst, hope for the best. But also have a obligation to protect the town. That's all I'm trying to say.
We're only going to take the move something like that. Well, you can put in the standard indemnity clause, that's not going to take it. That was, um. The other one, the timeframe of, here in which the concrete would be. Uh, replace the gravel or whatever, you could just, that, that applies right. Not.
Yeah.
Do we need to bring it back?
What else? That's what I'm trying, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Bring it back? So it doesn't sound like it's.
As long, I mean, I could come up with something, send it to whoever, they won't need to send it to the applicant. I mean, if that's something you want to pursue, I can take a look at those cases and just report back. There's no way to have zero risk, you know?
Yeah, there's no way to have zero risk, if you, alternatively, if you review the cases and. You say, I think, I think we're good, you know, their last case on this was fifteen years ago, and our fact that there's nothing like it, then. I think we're good. But if you review the cases and you say, I think we've got some exposure, then yeah, you know, I'm.
I think it's going to be very remote, regardless of what the cases say, very remote chance of being.
I think that's got to be quite rare.
As far as the, the concreting around our concrete plant. I mean, again, I, I would say within a six-month period, we, we will be doing that. I mean, we, we'll have to get, there's a lot of work involved to get it all set up and everything like that. I mean, that, that's something that we, we, you know, once, once we're established, we've got trucks on site and stuff like that, we wouldn't want to have to haul it. From Lee County and do all of that, when it's something that once, once we're there, we will initially have to haul in and, and stuff like that to get, get everything built. But that, that's generally something that, that we've done within a year's time of, of putting up a plant. I mean, because it's just, it's, it's too much of a mess to do it in other place. The, the other does not hold up and last. And again, uh, it's, it's just a lot simpler as far as us being able to maintain stuff, to have it all concrete. And I mean, that's, that's, we're in the concrete business, we sell the product, we encourage people to, to do it, to use it in industrial areas. And so we, you know, we use it ourselves. I mean, it's, it's going to happen and it will, it's definitely something that we will follow in. No, I'm, I'm talking about area where we're going to be moving our trucks around and stuff like that. You, you, it's too much of a mess if, if, if it's not done. Generally how we've always done.
We, yes, is there a way, I'm, I'm just asking, I don't know. Is there a way that, uh, I don't think the, uh, the concrete, I don't think that's the most of the issues there. The other thing about the indemnity, Mr. Fabley, is there a way that we can do, to do that? And say, all right, you got a recent order, you get up with them, and you do it, and everything looks good. And you say to the town manager, let's do it, and then, without us having to get together to another meeting, is there a way to do that?
Yeah, condition, but can you put a condition that both sides will, will, um, research and negotiate a potential indemnity clause?
Yeah, and if, and if it makes, makes the standard of our town attorney, then, if, if we go, then it's. From their approval, their, we want to give the town manager and the town attorney that we'll just do that or not have a way. I'm just asking.
That's what I was, I was saying, if, if we included the clause, and if the condition that says, yeah, both, both sides will be able to research. And negotiate a potential indemnity clause.
Sounds like an option.
Yeah, it's like an option, I mean, because if, you know, I mean, that, that's kind of what I'm, I'm looking at, so if we, we do an, if we have an option. That, and we come to find out that we researched it, it's not, it's not, and you don't have to go there. But if we, if we do find that there's, there's a potential, that we can then have both sides negotiate something as part of this, as part of this condition.
That, you know, I think so, but you still won't have the big. You know, I mean. What happens if we can't agree to something? I doubt I'm going to recommend that we made it.
Research, I'm hoping we'll find out some non-issue, but, you know, you don't know until you do the case law research.
But you're, 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 what you're saying is, it, it is unlikely that you would recommend that we would have an indemnity clause. So what I'm hearing is.
That's right. So I, you know, I don't guarantee, but.
Well, I know we can't guarantee, but.
But I, I don't think that that's going to be something that.
Yeah.
It's a serious.
What's the. We just find out, I mean, how can we just say what. What I was talking about, I don't know, it's a point, it does, we need to think about, I'm not thinking about, whatever.
It's almost like we reached an impasse, if not, until we do some research. Come back. Just, uh, hold, uh, what we did last time, uh, imagine everyone taking me, but what's the next name to which we. Yeah.
I don't think.
Always say seven.
November twenty-first.
There's a bar of questions there, what they all.
But. Probably the state does, if, if that's something that, that we're supposed to do. Is to recess the public, you know, with, yeah, eventually on the twenty-first.
So your main concern is, is that, that you could, that the town itself could be liable.
Or you could be liable.
Or us, you know, could be liable.
Yeah, I don't know, we didn't have a real one, but. You know, if you, it's not going to be good if I were one of us if that happened. It's less likely that we would be, this, your sovereign union towards, have to have a very simply correct complaint of bringing in on some type of contractual basis.
I think you're almost splitting hairs here with that, I mean, at this point, because quite honestly, as I said, I.
New technology?
Well, not necessarily new technology, I, I, I just don't think that you're going to have people go to such great lengths to kind of, you know. Concede that type of thing, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, but, I mean, of course, it's, it's, it's a possibility, but.
For the individual doesn't, you see, that they get to talk to an attorney, or the attorney can see.
Well, I would just like to add, every city, a lot of factors. Raleigh, I mean, they're all right there in downtown, there's several, I feel like this should, if this was common, you.
It would be.
In a lot of companies.
Yeah, the only difference is we're going to be quite a noble resident. But we're going to have a pound as long.
And I, I see that.
Six, six, seven, run the sheet. Way with a reasonable price.
As you saw in the video with Chandler, Pittsburgh, I mean, that's actually, throw baseball back and forth to that, or, where, I mean, where's not trying to do anything much that.
Even by the town, it always, you know, very likely a bit. There was a theory that the town would be brought in as a, as a recent case. You know. Um, it's going to have costs, like, seeking the potential.
Yeah, that's what.
You what?
Wouldn't want to do that without this one.
Yeah, I, I just, most, most of the cases I'm familiar with, and I've been involved in, that's, that's, you know, private parties. You know, the greenhouse, too loud, the industrial greenhouse, and several of those, um, litigated. And this one, we were involved in, we're all just going to play a little case. That was loud, too. Well, how do we move forward? We, we, we need a path to move forward on it somewhere or another.
Well, I mean. I just put forth the possibility, it's what I see, I don't know, I think you cross it out, I think possible, yes, means it's possible, yes. But, um.
But we never make them sure.
You enforce, if you enforce them, the noise ordinance, where it needs to be enforced. Um, I, I don't see how, how you could be a defendant in noise, if it's noise. You're not making the noise, I mean, you, or might approve this. But, you know, reason, you know, there's a reason you have a noise ordinance, and that is the deal situation where it becomes a problem.
Well, it's not us to, to maintain our decibel level.
Yeah, and so you feel like you can make the forty-five that's the same?
Well, if we can't, we'll be in trouble, so we, we'll have to, I mean, that's just as, as simple as I can say it. I mean, you know, you may have to work it out, or we'll have to start labor.
Because of sound goes up.
Yeah, I mean, um, so, you know, we'll, we'll have to have our ducks in a row, but I, as I said. But, but the noise that they're experiencing currently. Or, it's significantly louder than anything we've ever, they will drown, it will drown us out, like. There's the road right in front of our concrete plant that has a quarter of the traffic, it blows, it, it's ten times louder than anything we're doing. And I'm sure that's why no one has ever said anything about anything, if they can't hear the concrete plant, it's all they can hear, are trucks.
Well, if you feel that your new technology will need, you know, if you do protect it with the boardings. Um. And there's nobody, you have no complaints from.
I think the only, I think the only condition that we need, we need to, to consider there is, um, like, to, to this point, you know. Having the gravel, the gravel work areas, concrete within twelve months. I think if we, if we do that, I think we're.
And those pictures look good.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I think we're fine there.
But, um, there's been one complaint from the resident. I don't know, I mean, that's, um. Also, you're working, helping you anything?
So what, what, what we want, what we need, we need to talk. Don't worry.
If we're going to make, we're going to, if we're going to make a decision tonight, we're going to close the public here.
Right.
They, that's some language with regards to the concrete.
Yeah, we can, we can.
He just said, what, what, that's what he said, he, after that, Jack, a lot of it down.
Hey, we're so, we're probably.
Yeah.
Install concrete on site, or concrete touch drive, within twelve months, but any final zoning inspection approved.
Have to be letter Y?
Yeah. Twelve months, you like that?
Is that something that's the applicant to be original?
What was the very last part of that? Yes, we saw the concrete on site, where concrete touch drive within twelve months of any final zoning.
Okay.
Isn't that something I think would be agreeable to, that language?
Yeah, I mean, I'm speaking specifically the area around the concrete plant, where we'd be moving in and out, getting our trucks loaded, backing up and working and stuff like the works.
Works.
That's, that is what I'm referring.
Yeah.
Is that language, that, you mean?
Yes.
You hear it?
Right.
All right. You don't need to be, you don't need to be open anymore to the council. Anybody else, that you might want to ask, anybody else? I think you're safe to close it.
Close the phone at noon. All right, what, what would the board like to do?
Something. Name is. Read, we, the approving of the, of the, of the, your recommendation was approved on the, in system.
That would be, we're going to put it, on the baseline, say that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Uh, now, we have to do all four, Jeff, is that correct? On your, um, worksheet? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the official zoning map, including conditions consented by the applicant, including item Y. That the action is inconsistent with the adopted land development plan, because land development plan recommends mixed use. We approve the ordinance amending the adopted future land use map, and the proposed amendment is reasonable. Because it. Considers the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of any area proposed to be presumed, the benefits and detriments to landowners, neighbors, and surrounding community, the relationship between the current actual and permissible development. And the development permissible under the proposed amendment.
I don't have a motion, thank, any further discussion about. Not all of the favorite signal five of saying, ah, all those posed like sign. Jennifer, you get that?
Um, I have, I have Commissioner Bean and Commissioner Bray, is that correct? Against. Just Commissioner Bean, okay. Thank you.
Hey, Jennifer, while we're at a little bit of a break, I got a couple of things, people trying to get in on Zoom, if they can get there and say they're emailing you, if you got them fixed up.
Yeah, um, the, it's not Zoom anymore, it's just YouTube. Um, but I did get a couple of email, one email from somebody, from.
Yeah.
But that's it.
All right. Wrong call. So thanks, George. I'm sorry, thank you, Brad, well, thank, thank you, George, in there, right. Good luck. I mean, five minutes, I think five minutes. Yeah.
So it is a big, big price at two hundred five nine nine seventy five, I will say. But when you're talking about economic development proposal, what Samper Holthaus is doing. Finding a file study of that is going to be telling you these are all the things that you're going to need to address and challenge that you face. And the next question is, what are those challenges and how much of those things are costs? Reason if we can help blend that, but when Pearson and Williams and Samper Holthaus or Joe, the General Assembly on our behalf. They actually have hard numbers to deal with to have such state delegates, state representatives for direct funding. Um, so that's one of the reasons you get through this process. So you can be the recipient of some direct allocation. So I think this is, and I mean, I wouldn't say in the long run, even in the short run, I think more than pays for itself.
So direct funding for other tenants of this main site or direct?
Well, Samper Holthaus is funding studying economic development for the whole town. So what, what, what it may be.
Funding bringing those issues, capital transfer issues.
That's correct. Or it could be, they study and identify hundred million dollars of infrastructure needs. And they identify this particular utility project to the capital improvement funding and reasonable for together. They might have representative reason for funding to support that because you have two strong plans and two well-affected organizations. With the preliminary study that says it's supported cost funding. Just, just one, just one small allocation, then more than pay for this one. Now kind of the time to strike while there's funding out there for economic development and destruction. So you, you'd be a separate head of other municipalities that in their own, in their own request. So turn your hands out, you actually have the documentation for your request.
All right. So you mentioned funding. I think we've already, I think, remember wrong. We've already committed thirty two thousand, right? That's, that's nothing you already brought before. Where is the additional, how is the additional, uh, two hundred six thousand? How, how are we going to do that?
The, the sure answer to that would, it would come out of your understriking that assets on the utility project. Um, but it, but like I said, again, that's, that's a very short term cost, probably going to be more than reimbursing the cost. So, and that's exactly what you have a fund like that for, with the reference kind of thing, what you would give your budget for the newer region.
It all has to be paid one time upfront or can it be broken up into segments or?
So they have, obviously they're willing to do that. I would, I would recommend just paying it in one fiscal year. Because it's not going to ultimately impact your budget. This will be a fund allocation either, either way from your burden fund. It's playing across fiscal years, not really going to change your, your bottom line on something like this.
Is the fund healthy enough to be able to do this and not put us down a bite spot?
There's, there's over eight million in that fund right now.
Oh, I'd say that.
It's, it's in, it's in strong shape for something like this or paying for regular operations. Eight million does not go very far when you're talking about funding, margin of the target problem. That's where, that's where you're going to come short and that's what this study will do.
This identifies the, those ninety million dollar projects that we can, that we may need to go to the general assembly and say, gee, that's.
That's right.
But I do like the mayor's thought process of eight millions here today and they'll be here tomorrow. I'd like the mayor's thought process. If I don't think of one on one, I'm going to.
Well, that's, what, what was Hank saying there? We're so close to the end of the year. Like a mess. Is it a boot? Keep saying what? Span what you just said.
Sure. So I would look at this like a captain project. This is something that you're pulling out from, that has a long-term expense. You're going to be working on this proposal for a while. You know, I don't, that's not typically something you try to focus on this, this would be your project. You're looking at this as something that has kind of a lot of its own. For that reason, I would just pay for it and I would not try and look at it as something that's, you know, how do we make the profit in the existing budget? So if you're treating it that way, when you appropriate it from understriking that assets now or split it up. You're not going to cut something out of the budget to make that work in the future. So I'm not sure it makes. I think it would be easier on everybody and not making the whole package different if you pay for it upfront.
You feel pretty confident that this will pay for itself pretty quickly?
I would say if you're appropriating for several million dollars, two hundred and a thousand dollars, and that's for your, you know, for your funding.
I read in part of my thought process is that if we pay for it all upfront. And so we get to the, and the project is not going, we're not satisfied with what's going on. What recourse is, I don't think, based on our recent history with everything else that we're doing. That, uh, it doesn't ever work out all the time. We have some issue in the middle of this project or something. And, uh, what, what's that? Look, we ain't paying you no more. He said, fine, you've already paid me. And then they're not getting the job.
I think there'd be a difference in setting milestone payments.
Yeah, that's what, that's where I would look at it is, is, I know what you were trying to say, but I think it's, it's having milestone payments. So we're going to have this work done here. That's, that equates to thirty thousand dollars. This is the second milestone delivery, but we're appropriating it rather than appropriating it out of. Um, you know, our current budget, we can appropriate, increase, increase the fund balance to that, but make separate. Exactly.
Yeah, that's all I care about. Make sure you keep it in our camp. That's what I am.
But that's still only one piece of what this will be for. We need to help, you know, that to help improve the funds. We've had a, we've got a lot of tour rates in the year and we've been watching the environment. We know what direction that's going. We just need to know part of truth where it needs to be. Um, as we have more development, every town that's growing is addressed stormwater and solid cities that's not caught up to that. Um, this would have a feasibility study that tells what the support for stormwater programs to look like and what you might want to charge some rate to provide services. This is also private, this isn't going to tell you how much personnel you need, how many vehicles and equipment you need. This is, this is capital project level. So even with that, staff will come in and fill in the blanks a little bit.
And I think that's fine. I think what we're, what we're talking about though is that two hundred and five thousand broken up over a certain milestone payments. Now that's to me, that way we, we know, okay, we've gotten this far. This is, okay, now we can pay for this because we're, we're accepting of this, this piece of deliverable. This deliverable is a little bit longer. We're going to pay for that at the end of the deliverable cycle. Once we, once we're happy with the result. That's what we're looking for.
I like that plan better than just cutting off the check.
But I think, but I, I think, but to, to your point, I don't think you were asking us to cut the check at once. It was, he was looking for us to appropriate the money so that we have that, so that as the, as those milestones occur, we can let the check.
Well, probably down the line, but if you're black on, I, I can't.
Other questions? You need, you need to write, you don't need a, you need direction on this, but that would have been a motion.
We'd need two motions, one to approve the budget amendment and one to approve the contract.
We have a motion in a second. You're throwing a discussion. Not, I was the favorite seat cloud by eye, but I always pose like sign that part passes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign, to assign and execute contract. Uh, with Samper Holthouser and then.
We have a motion in a second. You're proposing like that. I was the favorite say aye, I always pose like sign. That too. Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I was asked to get an update on the. Getting the implementation of the board directive to, to change the term of office for the mayors for a four-year. And what that process is that, well, the time you made it, it didn't line up with the general thing was scheduled. So there's really not much to report except for what, how I'm going to handle it. And, um, real simple endeavor is I brought one to the boundaries that's done the same thing two years before you. Uh, a session law from two thousand, uh, from nineteen ninety-nine. I was going to look just like this. Now, what it, what it will entail is simply contacting the local delegation. Um, to request that they. Uh, introduce a bill that will look almost identical to this. And, uh, and I think the term, I think the next, I wrote down April tenth, and I think that's. This is why I wrote that down is that's when they'll be back in session. So we'll get up with the, uh. Local delegation and plenty of time prior to that. Uh, in the past, I have been asked. Paradise, you know, for a resolution from the board to the effect of, you know, reflecting what the, what the ask is. I don't think that'll be the case with something like this. Um. But that's no problem either. I've done those, spreading back, you know, whereas the town board, you know, just put some language in it. But requesting that they introduce the local bill increases the term to four years. So it just, the scheduling wise, there hasn't been an opportunity to do that.
That would, that would take place, that would be effective with the, with the. So if we, if we were to do it in the next, in the short session in, in the spring, then it would take effect with the next mayoral election in the fall. So, um, the election next, uh, what twenty twenty-three would be the, the mayor for a four-year term rather than a two-year term.
Yes. And that's how that. Is included in this local bill. And that's the main thing. Time goes by, you gotta sign up, make sure, I just want to make sure this got done in the right timeframe. So it would be about, yeah, the next election.
Well, that depends on the support that's the people of solid city. Do they own the impetus three years or forty years? I think that's something we should look at too, is what, is what do the people?
Well, there's an alternative to getting a, um, this local bill passed, it's, uh. I don't look into it very far, but it basically involves you making a decision to do it in the referendum. And this is, it's like several ways to do it and that, but that'd be the. Am I right on that? You, you know what I'm speaking of, don't you?
Yes.
We put it up like the election type, because it gets right like on the pond or.
Yeah, so representative of, of maybe the charter and if it's positive, then. It takes effect without a trip, without asking the general. I, I, this apparently has been done a lot of times where it's. It changes from two to four years to match the other.
Until the term.
I think the only thing that did it recently.
And it gives some measure of, of. Exactly continuity and with, you know, with the, with the amount of development and that we're, that we're seeing, it makes, it makes sense to have. You know, if, if, you know, the, the mayor, the, the commissioner's term is for, has seen a reason why the mayor shouldn't before.
I feel like we are the, we are the up to the big ones, obviously, especially we live.
Remember, uh, that we have put things attached into the water bill.
We could do both, we could add it to the water bill and then post it in the paper and then.
We can, we can do as many things as you wanna do.
I think that, I mean, that's, I think what we ought to do is craft a resolution or look at it, ask questions. Then, then we determine a date and time which we wanna hold the public hearing. Posted in the paper, posted online and put it in the water bill.
Put it on the radio.
Absolutely.
Well, let's do that thing. The last thing we need for doing grass.
No, absolutely, that's what I'm saying, we need to, I think we need to, I think what we need to do is, um, yeah. Craft a resolution, I think, is that something that we, you have, you got a resolution?
I've done it before.
Okay.
It was different types of asks, but.
Well, it wouldn't be similar to the, to the, what you're just gonna submit to the legislature?
Yeah, I can, it's, it'll be simple. The resolution itself will be very simple.
Absolutely, no. No, you know, nobody can say they weren't.
And, but it will be called public input, it wouldn't be called a public hearing because, okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, me too. We go over there on that, you know, whichever we're going.
About when do you think, I think, we, you know, holding this public input?
I think that's coming in the, in the manager. You know, that, hey, sure answer, it's probably not flat script.
So, well, but, but that, we, we can't, we can't have the, can't, you know, contact the delegation until April anyway, so, you know, we do it after.
Well, I can contact them before then.
Yeah.
If they get back to us.
Right.
You know.
We could hold it in January, February.
I would say, I would say, if you're early January, that way we've got maximum time to, you know, to, um, notify, have it crafted. Think about it and then, and then we have a ti- have a chance to, um, talk to the delegation, if that's.
So, if it's one of these things where we start getting wind, it's gonna be a big turnout during the Jan, like we did, uh, now or stuff?
Yeah, cuz this is not a public hearing, this is a public input session, it's different rules.
More of a, I mean, it's a.
We've always, uh, if, if the town hall's not ready, um, let's say we're second week of January, town hall's not ready. This place isn't big enough, we've heard, we've got wind, a hundred people are coming.
We could, can, for this public input session, can, can we, can we post? How, how, to, to your point, I mean, do, to get an idea of how many people are, are interested in speaking? Can we, can we request early sign up? I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
Sign up, if you wanna, if you wanna speak, sign up by X date.
Or, or an email of interest that you plan on attending?
I would almost say have a, you know, almost like, do like a, you know, like a sign up. You can sign up for it or whatever, yeah.
Uh, just while we, now, we can accommodate, uh, and maybe nobody should, yeah, but, um.
That gives us an idea i- in far enough in advance to say, can, or split it up into two sessions or whatever we need to do, I don't know. But, yeah, I, I'd, I'd be, I'd be amenable with that.
Yeah, like have some mechanism where they're reporting back about. Yeah, intend some type of ours, we can, like this.
Yeah.
You know, we, you know, we keep picking appropriate things.
No, what I need, I just wanna draft a resolution along with it.
Alright, I'll have it. I'll work the rest of it. Alright, anything else? Alright. New business. Planning community develop. Alright. Um, you remember, back in, I read. First October, we had a meeting where we were talking about separate planning, community, community develop.
When the second meeting out there was that?
Yeah, I think.
Sometimes the first October.
First October?
Yeah, this, yeah.
Well.
It wasn't last meeting.
Ever since then, I have not had a good feeling about what we did at the board. I've lost sleep over it, I prayed about it and everything else. And I've gotten all kinds of phone calls, got, and I think all y'all got emails about it. Um, on a couple of different ones. But anyway, whenever I sat, when I first came on the board as a commissioner and went on, the two guiding principles. That I've tried to go by, number one, what's in the best interest of the citizen. Number two, treat people like I wanna be treated. What we did originally with this, that it is one of those catalysts. There's a lot of reasons why. Uh, I've been doing right smart research and doing, been talking to a lot of people. You know, finding out what their feelings are and different things, but, you know, this, say this. I don't think this process was handled correctly and very good. Uh, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, I got plenty of detail to go into. Um, on process. Why don't we just start? There were at least four commissioners that were contacted separately from the group, given information. And about what was going on. And each, each, uh, commissioner that was contacted, each had a different story. And not all commissioners were contacted. Well, and go along with that, the commissioners were contacted before I was ever contacted about what was going on. When I finally got to see what these plans were, which was on a Saturday morning, and we were gonna talk about it on Monday, I had concerns. And I also had concerns, I said, what will we talk about? Well, got here and had to meet. And lo and behold, while we were doing it, all of a sudden we had a motion and we passed on. My folks, we spent more time talking about concrete plant than we did talking about creating a different department. Putting somebody else in there and pushing somebody else out. Now, y- if you remember that, cuz it, it, it didn't, it didn't take any, I think fifteen minutes and it was over and done. Uh, I have asked for it and have received, uh, I got a copy of the job description, planning director, community development director. These were done in October twenty-two. These were not even done when we were sitting here discussing, we didn't have enough information, all. Only thing we had was an idea, we didn't, we did not fully discuss it. And fun, talking with some of the different commissioners, there was a lot of confusion, and there still is a lot of confusion. On the board about exactly what was gonna happen. General consensus was that they were put out there, we're gonna get Jack's help, and I don't doubt, I'm not saying we don't need him. But we're gonna get Jack some help, but. I don't know that we give you any help, we just pushed him over to the side. So, I'm not happy with what it is, and the folks in the town not happy about it. Been talked all over, my phone just rung off the hook for thirty days. Now, what I would like to see us do, I think we need to admit that we rushed the judgment on this. And there's other ways this could be handled, all we got was one thing, that's all we had to, to go on, okay? That was it, we jumped on that and we did it too soon. What I'd like to see is, to halt this process, stop, and I'm saying do away with it. Stop where we are, kick this back to the town manager, let him come up with some different scenarios of what we can do. To accomplish our goal and give us some choices that we can look at. And also, we need to have some, uh, additional discussion about what we wanna do. The second, the second part of that, I don't know what y'all think, we all kind of talking about, you know, the chain of command and all that. Who do you think ought to be the first person that hears about this? Who, and you know where I was, number four or five, y'all heard about it before I did, okay?
You never contacted me and asked me. You never called me, contacted me, I don't know who's on your phone.
Well, that doesn't even really matter. It doesn't matter. I, then they had, Cindy, that didn't have anything to do with it. The important thing was, there was communications from town officials to the board. I was unaware of, and y'all were contacted before I was contacted, I had no idea what was going on, that's not right.
The mayor didn't contact somebody else.
Nobody has said a thing to me, nobody's complained, the lights called me, said anything. I don't belong to certain people in this board, and nobody has said anything.
They said planning to me and they said planning to those. So, what my recommendation, what I like to see happen, for the stop of where we are, this project. Why are we in such a hurry? Why are we in such a hurry to do this? And there are different ways to be able to accomplish the goals that we wanna do. Yes, we need some help with planning. And quite frankly, when I got the job descriptions, when I was reading through them. It sort of looks like to me that the folks we got fit in, fit in very nicely before we go. The requirements are all right there. So, um, but I think we need, we need to admit that we rushed the good on. And it's not serving, it's not serving the citizens and towns, it's not treating people like we wanna be treated. I wouldn't do that to anybody, I don't think any of y'all will. But we've done it. And the second part of that is, uh. We got both spoke to the green as a goal in all parts of the town, got town manager to spreading the goal. We've got, uh, planning board has at least two brand new members on, all the folks that we have that have experience. Have either rotated off or been replaced and, and one of them out is replaced. So we got a planning board that's really green, they just don't have that much experience. And we got a planning director, it's got twenty plus years of service in there. Now, I don't care what, you've been there twenty years, you've learned something, you've been around somewhere or another. But what really gets me about it, here in South City, have a five billion dollar project in our backyard. And we need as much experience as we can possibly get to accomplish the goals that we want to do. Yeah, we wanna take our most experienced people, push it out and bring somebody in. Number one, don't know the people, don't know what we've done, may be great, whatever, I don't know, this is gonna be a learning curve. Meanwhile, we're trying to work on what Will Speed wants to do and whoever else may show up. But yeah, we taking our most experienced people to that. Say, another part of this is, all the time talking about retention of employees, okay? What do we do to retain, all we talk about is throwing more money. Well, something else that has something that weighs into this, how do you think that the folks that work for the town, work for us. Feel when they see that here's a person that's been here twenty years, we just left fifteen minutes out? That doesn't inspire any kind of loyalty whatsoever, I'm done with that, I know what you're getting at.
Real close, I don't, I think we're okay, but we might need to go to a closed session if we're talking about specific.
No, we're not gonna talk about specific, that was, that was the end. But, said all that, say this, we were not in one accord as a board when we took that vote. There was too much confusion, whether we wanted to admit it or not, and having a conversation with the board members. There was confusion about what was being proposed and how it was being proposed. So I don't see that there's any problem asking, if we just stop the process where we are, send it back to the town manager. Let him come up with some additional information or different examples of what we can do, that they're out there, then we can pick it up and go for that later.
What happens if we come back with the same recommendation?
I don't know, but at least we'll be talking about it, but we didn't talk about it. There was, there hadn't anything been said about it. I get all, all the town manager did was come up and gave a proposal, talked about it ten minutes, voted on. And one day, we didn't even have a job description, which we now have, that's one of the votes, it wasn't done in October. So it happened, we, we didn't have that when we were talking about it, we didn't even know what we were. A whole lot of different areas, there was not enough information for us to make a decision. And like I said, we had spent more time talking about a concrete plant than we did about that. That's what, that's what my recommendation, no reason why we can't stop. Yes, we do.
So.
Alright, we got a motion in the second.
So, is the motion that the town manager comes back and brings us options on. What he feels is in the best interest of town for the planning department?
Because I'm, yeah, I, I, I wanna, I, I want, I wanna understand what it is that we'll come back with. So we, I mean, if we're gonna talk, I mean, and I have no problems, you know, sitting and talking about it, that's. I just wanna make sure that we're doing what it is that we're supposed to do and which. One of the things is, I don't think we're, we are making necessarily personnel decisions, we're giving the, the town manager the opportunity. To, you know, put people where he feels best, taking, taking names out of, I just wanna make sure that what's, what we're, what are we, what are we expecting to come back with? And what's the discussion we still need to have? How, well, do I, I mean, I, that's, I just wanna be clear about what we're gonna do.
It's a policy, uh, you know, policy versus policy evaluation. We're making policies.
Well, I don't know if we're talking about specific, it just happens to be specifically clear. I don't know, we're talking about specific, but I'm not, number one, I want clear, that night when we ended, I mean, I want to clear about what we were doing. With the town, what I should have done, should have favored it before we ever voted on it, so we can discuss it some more. But that was my, that was my lack of experience right there, that was my fault. That's the reason I, no kidding, I. I've lost sleep over it cuz I do not think we did the right thing to him and the way we wanna treat everybody.
I mean, I'm prepared with discussion, anytime, discussing alternative policy decisions.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, it's our position to give, unless it's a closed session, we're not in personnel issues.
We set personnel policy.
Yeah.
And the manager implement, you know, it doesn't.
My thought is, is that, no, I don't get down to that or the need on, but. I say let the manager take it back, come up with some different. Then if we need to sit down and have a closed session on it, we'll have a closed session on it. But the biggest thing is, I don't think we should move forward on anything, anything else on that till we get to that point.
I think it's probably trying, I think about what the law would rule, what some of the options might be, you know, the motions to extend the original, the motions to reconsider it.
Well, also.
Yeah, I don't really matter that much what it's called, but it's, it's, the motion to.
So we did vote on the policy, you know, we're talking about lack of, basically come out lack of information. The piece of information that we don't have today, talking about rescinding that policy decision, is where the town is. In its process of, of implementing the policy.
Well, I, 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 no, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, no, it's because we're interviewing people for this.
That's what I'm saying, so where are we in the process?
Let the town manager answer that.
So, we have a interview panel that, right, which can disturb any of our hires, which is going to consist of myself, a partner actor. Um, that knows and how they're, um, we have interviewed two and they were the positions both, um, effectively qualified. Our first planning director role. Um, we have not extended any offers, plans today would be scheduled a second interview so we can dig into some more nuanced. Uh, factors in helping make a decision, but, um, they're at least at the first level, um, but they're definitely qualified.
For that timeframe, so we're gonna reconsider what we do.
Well, that's, that's what you're gonna say, we just.
That's why I'm saying.
Hold the process, uh, we don't need to go any farther until we, like you said, we need more information, we need more information. No reason to drive forward till we get more.
But I guess, the, we, we keep talking about information, what information do we want, we need to. I mean, I, I'm just, and I'm not, I, I'm not trying to, you know, be obtuse here, I just. What is, what is, what is the information that we wanna be able to discuss?
We need to know exactly what these two positions were, okay, what, what they were, they were not explained to begin with, not whatsoever. They just said, well, we're gonna create this position, we're gonna create that, no specifics about it, none. It wasn't talked about, we didn't, you know, we didn't have anything. And I had serious reservations about it because it, way I'm, when I'm looking at it, when I looked at the two job descriptions. The, uh, community developer and the planner, there sure is a whole lot of overlap in between there, and I, and like I stated earlier. I see, I see a lot of opportunity for, uh, all kinds of. I would say, problem with disagreement and this overlap, who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that, who's gonna present this, who's gonna do that? It's not clearly, it's not clearly printed out, explained.
You wanna have a special call meeting on Monday, November fourteenth for this one issue?
You can have it, but I won't be here. We can, I won't be here, we can have a call session, I won't be here on the fourth day.
Well, we're trying to get something fitted to the time frame, cuz it's, uh, in some way we can just focus on this one topic.
Well.
Kind of the debate.
Yeah, I don't know, we can, we can do that. I won't see it go, I won't see it go back to the manager, come up with some stuff, we'll sit down and he and I can sit down and discuss it. And then we'll see about bringing it back to the board, like it should have been done the first time.
Well, the, the mayor doesn't have, um, veto power of what goes on.
I, it ain't about veto power.
But one thing was, we hired the, um, he did make the right decisions and did what's right. And I think he's been good, and I think he's done a good job. When you start quest, when you start questioning people, then you need to tell them, bring about the team, three, those people. When you start questioning what you're doing.
Well, let me ask you again. We talked about power and following chain of command, you're a lot. So what is the chain of command of this board?
The board hires you.
And who is that, who is again at the board?
You don't have a vote.
No matter where I gotta vote, who's the mayor of South City?
You don't have a vote.
The people of South City entrusted me, the lead, I don't have a vote, that's fine. Chain of command is, manager comes up with something, he said, at least, not it, through me, we'll talk about it. But sometimes there's some things he don't know, I know, some things I don't know, he knows.
It sounds like you may have celebrated on your part.
Well, I'm sorry if you sound that way, you know, I really do. Well, that's fine, that ain't got nothing to do with it, that ain't got, I'm talking about how we're gonna treat people that work for the town of South City. What is the right thing to do, okay? And the right thing to do was not done to start with, if it's been done correctly to start with, we would not even be.
You haven't told all these points.
And you.
Can I suggest that we go into the closed session or, or we have one on agenda anyway, every time. So, I'm worried we're getting into a discussion of the difficult person, not, uh, not the. I mean, it's kind of hard to ride that line.
Yeah.
I think if we're gonna discuss it, we should.
But there is a motion, Sandy, that has the second.
Well, well, the, the motion isn't clearly worded, I, I, I didn't know what the motion is.
And we have to come out of a closed session.
We can have a closed session and do it, so we, what, so.
I'm worried there must have been a closed session.
Oh, then, then I think what you have to do is rescind, you know, rescind that motion.
You can all rescind second.
Withdraw it, with, with, withdraw the motion.
Alright, withdraw.
Withdraw the motion, if you can second, if you can withdraw the second.
That's withdraw second.
If all the laws wrong.
No, it's withdraw this second.
Yeah, so, then we probably motion this, I think we're clear, I think that.
Alright, so we're going to a closed session after this, after we finish up here.
So you need to make a amendment to the agenda to go into a different closed session.
Yeah, with a different closed session.
So that's what they said.
Right. Well, we're going to the manager's report. They, uh, uh, state one like we in one morning. I see the Senate report of the downtown advisory committee. Um, I, I'll just say, we're currently as staff working on the advisory committee policy, which definitely don't have a policy applied. Uh, across the board and, and I would agree to your permission to allow the, the downtown advisory committee. Um, the lack of policies that apply across all the boards and set up the change of course. As, um, residents less effective in the community, and having some fair policies that will address things like how to be the one. Um, that's the candidates requirements, I think we've gone a long way to getting proactive to make the board more active, that's something we'll. Through current working with the group, uh, the downtown advisory committee has had several meetings canceled, um, due to lack of core. Um, one recommendation would be to reduce the size of that board and any others where, where I think we could get better participation for a smaller board that. Um, more consistently than it is, that would be one of the times, I want to recognize what that policy makes clear. It's one thing that you mentioned. Uh, thank you, one, uh, one twenty-one to one forty-one, schedule I, please, still reports forty-five, forty-fifth and forty-seventh. On the town hall project, maintain their estimated construction of new buildings in December, that is not. But working together, my project is going to enable the employees. Uh. Page one forty-two, I think, I'm sure it says more than a tablet, from now it is, we're definitely there. A annual Thanksgiving celebration program that is going to be on Saturday. Remember the night heat beginning seven thirty-eight noon, that the management, uh, following solid food process in the center, in the Ford parking. You know, follow up into the stadium. That's just letting that through. On page one forty-three, final thanks by packet, the, um, board asks to agree on the name of the. Ingress rate to the campsite. Play games that are within the purview of the board's commission. The owner of the school by a red moon, Carolina Four Parkway, that the board has certainly been a pride to. This is in the, the key, uh, one of the, uh, many that you're thinking to whoever, Carolina Four Parkway, you know.
I don't know if that created, so, you know, I, I, don't ask me.
That is to compare to the award on.
Yeah.
Alright, um, also, the, um, heat packet, you can go with that. Um, that is a full copy of the grand, uh, private, personal, new personnel policy. Um, that's been, we worked on a sample month of a lot of town staff, um, department heads and all, and department head meeting. And honor the meeting and discuss this, all says, as you see it, um, I keep going and all your content. I want you to play time to review it and have time to put ample questions together, uh, which is why I'm not on the agenda for my, but it would be. Um, it's a lot of time to attend the board from last year, but it would be, but I would be glad to put up for those, remember the one first, so we can uh, go into that, and, so, personnel policy today is rather incomplete, uh, lots of things that the organization uh, having their policies that aren't as addressed. Uh, some factors of our policy are, um, incompatible tonight, and also policies that are all about, uh, the different location system. If there was a comprehensive personnel policy where everything that we sit well and has a particular value in the place. Uh, it would be key of all three years, personnel policy uh, of the board, to any, or this, for example, would still stand, so the only one I can identify that I'm aware of is the board is about to back of free policy, uh, back of free order, that would still stand on its own, and all of the personnel policies would follow the recipe, okay?
So is this just for informational purposes or?
Or, or tonight meeting for informational purposes, I, I would add since, do not, do not, we're
Can we go back to that, please? Can the, the point to the improvements?
Yeah.
When's that, January, is it January?
I, I really think it's found beyond what we're being told before, um, maybe late December is what we're being told. Um, progress is being made, um, a lot, I think a lot thrown again on how long it takes them to then have the punch lists, and like a broken record saying that it's several meetings, but that's, that's really what it's gonna come down to. And they do the punch lists and the final fact, or is that gonna, is it gonna go on?
Okay, so, this is number, I'll tell everybody, link you.
Yeah.
All right, and if we can go back on nine point one. You mentioned that it's a large board, they missed quote several times. And I know it's informational item, but are you, do you come back with any recommendations on that?
What, yeah, what, what I would come back with is recommend approval of a uh, advisory board policy that would address a lot of the types of issues, that are trying to business on each, each issue, that's addressed all competencies with all the advisor.
It's not, it's not specifically to this advisory board, it's
Well, you said it was, it was in the, you know, town advisory.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a particular issue that, that we're having in town, it's the only one I'm aware of that we're actually consistently not being able to perform. That, that, that happens time to time with the advisory committee, that's not unrealistic, but or the happen rate really is, is
Six out of ten towns.
Yes, affecting operations.
Well, met six times, yes, called four.
So we, we found a pretty good model in another panel, and we're trying to modify, it's a great draft, you but it would, it would include some some correction for, for our advisory board members, and also if we have tenant issues in the future. Basically, if you adopt the policy, maybe automatically remove, instead of the board having to take action to remove them, but the board may not want to do, so it'd be an automatic removal, so we can do the cleanup, have a concentration of them. Replacing someone, and also it's not discriminatory, it's consistent practice that we apply every time.
And certainly it can be something that we can point to when we're requesting participation on a given advisory board, to say, here are the expectations, and you need to
Another component that would be, um, conflict of interest, not something we really ask for, but it might be what's known for anyone to grow. So someone got a different interest in something, they're voting on even in the advisory class, and it may affect your, having them on the board, or it may not affect disclose.
Yeah, I know, on, on other, other, two other boards that I, I'm on, um, we do have a, we have a conflict of interest statement that we read out every single meeting and recognize, you know, bringing forth a, you know, whether it's a conflict of interest, acknowledging it, and then you're responsible for abstaining from the discussion, and I think, I think we need to have something like that.
Would you guys mind voting on the road thing, just so we have that for the record, please?
The motion will, will, ring. That's Carolina Four Parkway.
Yeah, I'm voting second, all in favor of that, all right, both like that, here.
Um, I guess one final point to start, well, what are the implications today on the first hour?
I believe, I have, not really a question, but some are more revised on your first place, your index, the ones that are more revised. Can I get it straightened out, if what the original was, I don't have any time to compare it.
I'm, I'm still for something, okay.
You understand what I'm saying, if, if it's revised, I don't want the old policy. So, I mean, okay.
Next point, um, now, since we speak on public comments tonight about the water deal, it's not something that we discussed with the board, but I wanted to see if there were any questions from the board about that issue?
No, uh, honestly, I wanted to say something, but I didn't, you know, was reaching for the new order measures, and I didn't know what was still in last, so that won't happen anymore.
That, that, that's correct, that will be the long-term solution, that will create all of that.
Right.
Um, so far, we have, we've added out a bid, um, we had it out now for a second bid, because we only received one bid, eventually we have to get that back out.
Right.
Um, that is in the R S P process right now, so it's, it's, it grew by a lot, but we're tactically obligated on, on the big requirement.
The, uh, she mentioned six other people besides herself. Have we been able to reach out to those six people and, oh, they're about their situation?
I'm not sure who those six individuals are specifically, but, but we have on a face-by-face basis addressed any issues someone may have with their bill. So I've, I've addressed this to the panel who got on the record for a few weeks, I don't know if y'all know enough of that, but um, we've had software issues that go back a couple of years. Um, it's been a challenge identifying where the problem lies, I think there are multiple issues on a single one. I think we can pinpoint back to the implementation of the smart fusion um, software with, uh, repairs of our financial software, and communication between that and Fager, which is our moving company. That sometimes we did not do it correctly, and that does not mean there being any problem about staff, we've often did that to verify we're not judging theories. When we have, on the radio reviews versus manual reads, we went out and, and compared to the manual reads and the radio reads to see where those are correct. And, and generally what we found was that we, through our under reports, you know, that, that actually was higher um, when we did that audit, not significantly, but it was, it was a little bit of a difference there. Um, where we see a lot of spikes in bills, where someone may get a five hundred dollar bill. It seems like on the radio read was fun, it did not read, it, it ended up reading zero read, instead of reading that going to then it would come back a month later and aggregate a couple months' bill, and, uh, once you get billed a five hundred dollars, that's not a flip one every single day, but that's a, a commonality that we found. Um, the new meter system would correct all of that and, and give our residents time, be able, to be able to read their meters in real time. Um, not, not just when they're read by the staff, so that, that would, would fix that problem.
And what's the, what's, what's the timeline of implementation for that, once we get, once we, you know, accept the bid from the time back to implementation? Twelve eighteen months, so we need to make sure that we've got a plan in place for the twelve eighteen month period to audit and make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're addressing any issues.
And, and issue will be fixed, and I think the biggest challenge with staff, if the staff was unaware of the problems just at first place. So now that the staff are aware, we can do a better job auditing, month when the same deals out, let's see if something's not looking right there in that time, that's something we're doing, if something appears off, then the staff has a discretion to adjust that bill to what looks like normal usage for that resident. The, the default answer of staff is always going to be, there's a big spike for a single month, you might have a leak. Uh, that doesn't mean that that applies in every situation, but that is different. What you would always see with these types of facts, but when you see a critical, possibly people in the panel, you know, that
I, I think we need to be careful about general, generalization, and, you know, well, it, it's, and I, and I, and I appreciate that, 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 that lady's, um, issue and concern about, well, if, if I have a leak um, or it's, you know, whatever the particular issue is, I think before we make, before we make a determination or, or give them what we think it is, we need to investigate it a little bit more.
I agree with that.
Not a blank answer.
Yeah, probably go to the left and look at the new, we have to leak the paper in the month. Everybody's home, that shouldn't be anything running. It's simple enough, of course, now the new meter system will correct all that.
Well, this is not a situation that is, that is off, that's that, the thing, unfortunately, a reaction
Yeah, I just, I, and, and I appreciate the, you know, the work that's been done, I just wanna make sure that we have a plan in place that, you know, we can, we have, that, that's scalable. And ensuring that we're, you know, following up on issues like that.
You know, it's been a lot of work by utilities, and fireworks, and finally it's expressed, and, and continuing to work on it, and also at least three, three issues have been identified, the resolution is not, it's not, my saying is, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, it, it's, this problem's going to hold a while. But what we'll do is, that would be as transparent as we possibly can, sharing the calendar we're facing.
Well, that's all, man. Ernie, you got your name?
I don't have a name.
There in the body.
I dropped one there for you. Pretty surprised. Talking about music downtown, when I was growing up, they used to play Christmas music, their speakers on them. Utility phone, I don't know if y'all know it, but I had no idea what came to the music. It was, it was recorded music, but guessing one of the scores, what did it, I don't know, I didn't know what it was.
That's wrong, we did that, maybe?
Maybe, I don't know, I don't remember growing up, or Bill Walton, never.
That was my Yeah, there we go.
I worked, it was, it was like, yeah.
Whatever it was, for a while, yeah.
I mean, she wasn't complaining, she was asking, you know, what happened, I have no, I have no idea. Yeah, she would like to have advice. And I do remember, and there are constituents down there on the utility phone, but I don't know before it came out. I don't know who gave it, it might have been Mr. G, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's It's even been separately located, too.
Anyway, yeah, that's why I asked you off.
All right. Anything else, you go in the bun.
All right, I'm making most, we're going to close session, so, north on, jump back to one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight three.
Motion in the second, all in favor? Uh, we closely I got the all, good faith.